Well, good evening and welcome to our budget workshop. This is the March 8th, I believe. So, we're here to take a look at... We're here to take a look at our proposed budget to make comments and see what we can learn about what's happening for the future, in the future. So, we have had opportunities, I have had opportunities, to meet with some of the department heads previously, but this is the first time that corporately we'll be looking at it. So, I will, at this point, turn it over to the Marsh, treasurer.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, the Marsh Board, the locks of 10 Bs. I guess, should we first start with a little Q and A sheet?
Yeah, sure.
Why don't we do that? That would be good.
Number trivia for everybody. Okay, so first of all, Jake and DPW were super careful with their spending this year because we didn't really know what was going to pan out with the rest of our COVID season. So, we budgeted to take $109,000 from the vehicle reserves, but we did not need to use that. So here we have 371,000 plus in reserves available for use. Anyone see anything there?
So, the 109 would be part of the vehicle and equipment reserve?
Yep, it's included.
Do we have any vehicle plans or any other stuff?
Yeah, we're looking at replacing pretty quickly here, trying to replace two of the vehicles. A pickup truck with a plow on it and a flatbed, W1 and 2, hopefully get those out of this year's budget. Unfortunately, by the time we get them and sell them, the old ones, that probably will go in the next year's budget. But we have that available to us. And then trying towards sometime in this next budget, we have requests in there to replace two of the other, another pickup truck and another flatbed. And then also we're replacing our oldest six-wheelers, they're in that W10. And that's a big bite. You'll see that in the vehicle equipment line. That truck alone outfit and the plow and everything is about 230,000.
Oh geez, and we're good with like, we just did something, right? Recently, loaders, backhoe, that kind of stuff?
Yep, yeah, the loader is new, it's a five-year, is it five-year or seven-year? I'm gonna say five. I think it's a five-year lease purchase thing. That we're doing with that. The backhoe is a 19, that, you know, that we can look at at some point. There was a trade-in thing that every time we sign up for it, that cat stops doing it the next year. So, we gotta see if they're doing it again and maybe try to take advantage of it, keep it...
Yeah, keep it fresh, I agree.
But the rest of the vehicles, the vehicle rotation stuff has been working. It's the older ones that we have that are beating us up most of the time. Our W10 just said needed new springs in the front. They found, guys are doing regular maintenance on it, looked and found this cracked spring. And that was about 4,500 altogether with the lamer materials. Just want those springs out.
Yeah, it really costs us to hold on to the old vehicles.
Yeah, and our vaccon, our vaccon's beating us up right now, but we don't have a, we ordered the other one thirteen months ago.
I was gonna say, we voted on that one.
It's crazy, yeah. Supply, yeah, supply is crazy. And it was slated for production the first quarter of this year and we haven't really heard anything yet. And then once it's there, then it's gonna go to the outfitter to turn it into, you know, if that's just a cabin chassis and then we need to make it into a backdoor truck, that's a long process as well, so, you know.
What's the rotation of that kind of truck?
What we're, our aim for when we started the vehicle rotation policy, I think with this board we started it, it was in 2014 or '15. Our aim was to keep the pickup trucks by every three years, rotate those. And frankly, we're a little behind on that schedule now because of some of the COVID stuff when we're waiting to see where we were.
And there wasn't a lot of inventory.
Well, and the good news now, I just saw one on an auction the other day. It was a 2019 F-250. We have a 2019 F-350, F-250. It only had about 10,000 miles on it. Our says, I think, 30. It went for over $40,000. So, if we can get them out, you know, hopefully you get the replacement one in or something to replace it and get them out into the marketplace, I think we'll do pretty darn good. And that truck, we paid, I think, 35. It was 28 plus the plow and stuff, I think it was about 35, so.
We get 40 for it, that's...
That's in three years, that'd be insane. That's certainly not the intent when we're buying trucks is that, but wouldn't hurt my feelings. Yeah, but they're crazy right now.
And we will get to more of the, you know, the purchasing and the trade-in values and stuff afterwards. Okay, so next, what's the status with the ARPA funding? We have already received half of it. Our total expected is 581,230. And we've spent 80,000 plus of that so far just on things that needed to be done anyway. So, the money that we would have spent on those things is now available to save or, you know, spend on special projects or whatever. So far, so good? Okay. And Darrell was asking me the other day, when do we start making payments on our project that is slated to happen in just over two years, May of 2024? So, we definitely need to start planning for it, but we don't need to budget for it. That's gonna be a big bite out of STP. Comments, questions?
May 24?
May of '24, yep.
Well, we have, at that point, Marshall, we have retired anything that we're carrying right now?
I think we'll be...
Pretty close, right?
Pretty close. We might have, I think we'll have one, maybe two years of doubling up. But then at least some of that 2012 bond will be cut off. Okay, what effect would increased sewer fees have? I understand we don't want to raise the sewer charges this year, but just looking forward, I did the calculation in a couple of different ways and got different answers. So, Jake and I are gonna dig into why that is later on. What you guys are looking at is based on EDUs. I just did the rate times the EDUs to get our numbers. But when I calculated it based on historical information, like the average revenue from Xerox over the last two years, the average quarterly billings and stuff like that, we come in significantly less, like about 175,000 less per year.
What we have in our paper, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is 1187, that's just the residential that's billed annually in the...
Yes.
In the tax bill.
Yep. So, hopefully by either the next workshop or the next meeting that I come to, I'll have better numbers for you. But if we aren't planning to increase the rates this year, then we've got lots of time to figure that out. Okay, and then I think the last thing I put on here is how much we expect to spend on this project, our new STP project in the current fiscal year and the upcoming one. So, the two numbers on the bottom right of that little table are our expected spend. Almost all of it for the next few months is gonna be for Lobella. And all of it so far is gonna be covered by that 1.4 million grant. So, we're just fronting it and then we should get our reimbursement from EFC within a week after BPD submits our reimbursement requests.
So, from the...
Go ahead.
From the grant, that turned out to be about 1,900,000. So, we have a 1.8, how do they...
Say again?
And do we have 1.8 mil on the grant?
No.
It's 1.4.
1.4?
Yes. And then anything in between there, the van is gonna cover that until we get into our bond. And Matt from Lobella gave us a cash flow projection for multiple years, I think through 2027 or so. I can share that if I haven't already. Did I send it to people? I'll send it out if the cash flow...
I don't remember seeing that one.
For the project, okay. Okay, I'll send it out.
No rush, Marshall.
Okay. All right, any comments or clarification needed on the Q and A?
No.
No more Qs? Awesome.
Very deluxe job.
Okay, should we do sewer next? What would you guys like to do?
Sure.
Oops, doos. And I've color-coded because everyone, including myself, seems to get confused. The sewer's got the green stripe on top. And because all of the EFC project spending is gonna be covered by the grant and because I don't know how to do that accounting correctly yet, those numbers are not included here. This is just our regular STP functioning. So, I can go line by line if you want or you could just take a minute to look at the numbers and read the notes. Oh, I do wanna point out, the very last line on the third page, revenues over or under expenditures. With the numbers as they stand right now, we will have a surplus of 140,483.
For this coming year?
Yep. Oh, and the other thing that I have not put in here is the ARPA funding. This version of the spreadsheet has the higher sewer estimate. Remember I was saying I did it once by EDUs and once by... Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's got the lower one. But the difference in how they were calculated, that's why the G21, '22, the commercial sewer rents, that the projected budget is lower than our budget for the current year. At this point, it looks like the lower number is gonna come out closer to what we actually see. Also, Greenbrier, we expect to see a fairly big chunk of sewer fees and permits based on, let me see. In my copy, I have a little more detail about what we can expect from Greenbrier and when. Yeah, I can't find my note on that. But Aaron and Joe put their heads together and they're expecting, I think, 15 units to be completed this year and then another 39 in the coming fiscal year and the remaining 70-something the year after that. But they've already sold, I think she said, 44 units.
Really?
They're going crazy, yep.
What's the anticipated revenue?
For Greenbrier?
Is it on here?
I don't know, did it print on yours? Each building in that complex is either three or four units. So, for sewer fees, we get $800 for hook-up to each building plus 250 for each unit. So, that's the roots of those.
Okay.
For G40, '89, CDBG, we've got 50,000 in revenue going against 50,000 in expenses at the bottom of the first page, 81,241.
They're lining, these guys are looking to repair pipes, manholes, etc., with the CDBG?
That's what we're looking at doing, the relining like we did on Phillips Row and then recently out of... This is on Kircher. They're here to place pipeline. We're gonna do, it's actually from near Sun Automotive. It runs down behind the Shaver Ross building underneath the walkway. Actually, they have connected the two buildings and goes into a wooded area and then turns. So, there in area, years ago, we had some issues with root intrusion. So, we wanna make sure of line that and prevent the roots from getting through there. Since we're doing sidewalks, we submitted that for the CDBG funds. We included that sewer line in that. It serves that Kircher Park area as well. Hopefully they'll say yes. And if not, that's one of those things that we, right at this time of year, we have to submit it. We go to the first meeting in January, you have to submit it by beginning of February. The request for the CDBG, those funds, we don't typically hear about it until May and then it's not really finalized until September. So, we usually do them the following year. But that's why we put it in the budget and then if they, if we don't get it, if we don't do that present or we find an alternate way of getting it done.
All utility increases.
Yep.
It's gonna get worse before...
Anything else you'd like to discuss?
I don't know, I think this is actually pretty good, pretty neat.
Bank service charges now wrapped up in... Bank service charges, I think wrapped up under something else now, Marshall? That was lying down.
Bank service charges for sewer? Uh...
I'm just wondering.
Where is the sewer one?
On the front page, yes.
It says bank services.
Bank service charges, 1325...
407.
407.
The front page there?
Under expenditures.
Do we not have any...
Mine's blank there.
Yeah, that's what he's asking, is there no charges?
I'm sure we asked them, where do they go?
There's nothing there.
Or do we not? And therefore, this line could be eliminated, yep.
Well, we have to have something there for at least a temporary spot for me to put charges that the bank puts there or that vendors charge us while I work to get them waived. Which, I mean, they all get waived, but I have to say something about them in the meantime. Yep. Sorry, I thought you were looking at something...
Or it's not. It's hard, like, we need to type it in here.
We have no contingency?
No, there is no contingency. And I left that blank with the intention of, yeah. I mean, to make the budget balance, our contingency at this point would be that excess of 14483. Jake, would you like to speak to the equipment? The 8132 underline? We've got all new stuff, pretty much. So, we have 83,459 for, I don't even know what a telehandler is.
Oh, telehandler, say Bobcat, so forklift, basically, that extends, the telescope cell...
Okay.
That we have down at the plant, but we also use it for snow and ice, all snow, I guess, over, down at the plant, so we get snow.
Okay. So, I think John said our current one was purchased in 2015?
I wanna say it's a '14, but I believe him more than me in that. So, 15 and 15.
So, that's really the last of our aging stuff down there, but...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the new dump truck. And we got the other pickup truck and the service truck on order that's replacing the van. And then obviously the vacon that we talked about before that we're waiting and waiting and waiting for, initially.
Yep.
Snow pushers.
It's basically like a snow plow from the front of it and it's included with the telehandler and that. And some of them, there we have a box, so we can push and control the snow when you go down the lane and stack them, so. Keep in mind down there too, sometimes they'll stack it up. That's where we bring, during the day when we're hauling snow, we bring it down in our old capos bed that helps, you know, melts at those, it's connected to the plant as well as those ends. So, we're not putting all that salt and things into our stream or treating first or anything, correct, or, you know, things that are in mixing with the snow in the hallway. And he uses that telehandler to stack it there too.
And my understanding is that all the attachments and stuff that we have on the existing one can be transferred over to the new one. So, that'll help us to keep costs down as well. Are we ready to move on to the general fund?
It is. It's gonna be on you.
Okay, blue stripe, revenues. Actually, let's jump first, if you go to the last page of the expenditures. At the bottom, we've got the same calculation, the revenues over expenditures. And in this budget, with the numbers as they are, we are short about 8300 dollars. But I will add, that is without taking anything out of any reserves and with getting all of the maintenance and upgrades and vehicles that we are thinking are needed. So, I'm pretty happy with this budget, honestly. Okay, back to revenue. Property tax, the maximum increase we are allowed without a special board vote is from 218 to 222.4. So, this property tax revenue is based on that number. Sales tax is bouncing back very nicely. So, I took the average of several different things and this is a fairly conservative estimate. Aaron and Joe came up with the building, 2555, the building and alteration permits number. So, certainly not as high as 2020, but it's looking good. Okay, other significant numbers, we've got equipment sales, 60,000 to help offset all our new stuff.
Might be more than that, what else? Yeah, one thing, we try to be pessimist on both sides of the kind of estimate, how much are your costs high and how much we're gonna get, kinda estimate well, so. Try not to get some surprises.
Yeah, not bad surprises, anyway. The mortgage tax is, I went higher than this year by quite a bit based on what we've received during this fiscal year. Doesn't look as though it's gonna go back down anytime soon. So, hopefully that. And then we've got two-thirds of our total expected ground field opportunity grant. And some chips money. Honestly, I didn't dig too deeply into that number. That's Jake's number. And then we've got the non-sewer portion of our CDBG request. And then we've got the non-sewer portion of our CBBG request.
Significant moving lower than past year?
No, it's, it's split, the sum of it, the sum of it's a sewer job. I'm actually asking for a little bit more, but we had to split it between the two budgets. I don't think, I don't know if I'm asking for more, I'm asking for more, we got, I don't know if I'm asking for more, we asked for it before.
Hey, anything here you'd like to stay with?
We're good.
Okay. Pink stripe, general expenditures.
I had a question, stood off.
Okay.
Building maintenance.
Yes.
Now, maybe I'm missing something here, it's ten thousand dollars for DPW break room. What are we doing for ten thousand bucks?
Well, this is, we were talking about today, and we were trying to get together some numbers, if, just in case. Then the flooring in there, probably, we talked about redoing the floor, they put that in here and down there a few times with some sort of hardwood flooring, right? Uh, just a real quick estimate, when we were trying to put them together today, we looked at the county bid. Um, and that flooring was about fifty-seven hundred, I think that's a little pessimistic, I don't think this will be that much. But that's what we put in for, you know, kind of a lower, essentially one of the lower range hardwood floors that go in there, if you'll surprise.
Sorry to interrupt, but the current floor down there is that asbestos tile stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it needs to be...
Yes, let's call that.
It is, it's those old floor tiles that are in there, so we thought, you know...
It's in good condition, I assume.
Yeah, it's in good condition.
You can floor the floor right over.
Yep, and so, so we're looking at seeing if we can just go right over it, and that's one of the things I didn't have time to get the answer back from the company that's on the bid, because the bid's included installed and removal of the old floor. And I would not want to remove that floor, obviously. So assuming then there's a, either you run it through differently and just do added material at the hourly wage, or, um, it's, there's, I don't know if I could see a different price for, if they just went over the existing. So, and we gotta try to narrow that down and talk to the people that are in that company that has a bid for that. Uh, then we were looking, we were just kinda ballparking, looking for something along that wall where the, that fridge is sink, stove radiator thing is, that's over in the corner. Um, you go in there, you know, trying to do, wash any dishes, and it's a, you know, it's a sink, a drainage thing, two eating things, and there's a refrigerator underneath it. I can't stand at the sink, it's right up against the wall, it's kinda really wacky, so. I was just trying to throw things together and say, hey, can we do something here? Because obviously it hasn't had much done to it, and we've built it in the sixties, I think we've painted it a few times. So we can do something there that's makes it a little better, more enjoyable, um, going here and there. And one of the things I've seen that other DPWs is they, their break room, they have stacked, like, microwaves. So it's, everybody comes in for lunch, wants to eat everything at the same time, this guy takes four minutes, and this takes four, and this takes half the lunches over by the time the six guy in line, either he eats something cold or he...
Uh, some electric just supports seven microwaves.
No, that's, well, like we said, what we talked about was maybe stacking three.
Yeah.
Having a, you know, some real furniture in there, an oval table, um, that we can, you can utilize for lunch and...
I truly support, uh, break space and stuff for staff, I think it's important. And it was important that not junky conditions and all that, and I just think, um, I had been around the projects where we spent this money and within a year, two years, and it was, I'm sorry, it was pretty bad, so I think...
I'm sorry, I could agree with you, it's not over.
Yes, I'm thinking if we invest in this, it'd be nice, and not saying that you don't have this and maybe you can do that, it'd be nice to have some sort of, um, if it's a checklist of some sort where that team is responsible for maintaining or, you know, because if you put a lot of money, they could change it two years. A lot of guys sold, whether they're...
Yeah, absolutely, and it's, it's one of the things, you know, it's a, it's, it doesn't look great down there now, admittedly, it doesn't look great. And I'm wondering if the chicken and the egg thing does not look great because it's, you know, kinda depressing, gross place sometimes, or just that they don't take pride in, um, because not a lot to speak about. So if there is something nice in there, would that change, uh, change things, it'd be a more comfortable setting and something that's, that's better and and works out better, and, you know, and that look for ties in the hall, kinda furnishings and things with, you know, we get some durable floor for it. And somewhere, I was looking for a, kind of just trying to piece together the idea of prices, worst case scenario things. And either roll cabins with a sink thing in there, and somewhere you can put the microwaves and any of that utility things. So we can put some things away and have some supplies and, you know, they spend a lot of time here, especially this, this last winter, there's a lot, so. I'll make sure that it's, uh, up to one, and when they're, you know, their food, you know, they keep, they have a spot to put their food, their lunches, and the guys, it's great to use them, and so that'll...
Definitely, it's definitely needed.
Yeah.
Oh, while we're on that line, Joe caught a little boo-boo, I have the new tables for this room listed twice. So we can have three thousand off that total.
Oh, tables and... And, and we're gonna do carpet tiles in here, right? That's the plus, like, that's staying right there, we could probably get rid of it.
Throw that one in the spot and blow it up?
Yeah, the only downside to it was we thought we should be ever having a big water or flood here or something. It is so, you can't extract it, the water gets underneath the rubber from the back of a carpet tile, or, and you can't get it out.
Oh, I know.
It's awful, we literally have to take it, take pretty much all the tiles off, it's air, air dry, where, because machines have to suck through the rubber, and that's just unfortunate, but... I don't think we can have that now, yeah.
We can start and just replace the spots where you have stains down eventually, if you can.
That would look awesome.
Cut out a little square.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Are we finishing the, uh, and then the bathroom in the hall this year?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
With the flooring and all of that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the plan, is, is we have it in there, um, and we're trying to do, I think we got ceiling tiles for it. If they have the paint for the wall, the hidden walls, they're gonna paint for the trim. And then we were looking to see if we had leftover flooring from when we did the little meeting room. We did not find that, because it's not part of that bathroom. Uh, we didn't find that, so we have to, so we're gonna select, uh, a flooring, and I don't know who's in charge of selecting the flooring, I'm not in charge of those type of decisions.
So now you started something, because Heather's gonna want the, the break room and the office up there all changed now.
Yeah, we're good.
You want what, you just said I want, so there's something...
She wants something else. It's in there.
The only thing we would like, maybe, is some, it's that stuff you put in the wall, insulation, Will was supposed to do that for us in the break room, and he never did it.
Oh, it's cold, isn't it?
Very buttoned, yeah. Donna said in there.
Oh, is that the voice from the hall for him?
Yeah.
Oh, that was, that was for up above, I think.
On top of the ceiling?
Yeah, above the ceiling.
On the wall, the wall, you probably blow it in. Can't really stuff the insulation in the wall now, but you can blow it in, the wall, you can cook it.
Just take the walls off.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, and Jake has als- also offered to repaint downstairs for me, so...
I don't know if that was an offer, it was, I think I said fine, whatever.
We have it looking snazzy.
Oh, there's one question mark, is thirty-six twenty-four oh six computer hardware? I have, I don't have a number there, but we, the huge copier that's, uh, next to Aaron's office, um, doesn't do what we need it to do.
Well, it sounds like we still have something. So it, it didn't do what we needed it to do last year? Or is it, you, you need it to do something that...
When did it stop?
What, I missed it.
The big printer by Aaron's.
Oh, recently.
Like six months.
Did we get that serviced?
No, it's too old, no one will service it. And someone was just here, sorry, someone was just here today to give us a quote, and he is gonna get back to us with a breakdown of, like, all the lease costs versus purchase, but, um, this one, I don't know how old it is, but we spent, we paid thirty thousand for it.
Um, I believe it was a...
Shared with the town?
Agreed. Part of it.
Part of it was a grant?
I believe so, yes. We split it with the town, and they have their own now. And personally, I don't think it needs to be this year, but...
So you called them, see if they wanna buy it back?
We have their, they have a new one.
Well, the good news, though, is, um...
They didn't offer to split this new one.
They split it their own.
They were gonna split the old one with them, and that...
Well, we met with, we met with, um, a rep from Toshiba today, and we think we got a, a really good plan to have all of the printers. They will, even if they didn't buy them, we can put them in a service agreement, and they will take care of it, fix it, um...
That's what we have.
So we're looking to that.
On Xerox.
Yeah, we have Xerox, but we have lease agreements.
All right, so the good news, though, is, um, the prices have gone way down, and we're looking at a little over seven thousand, including the service contract. For a new one. So stay tuned for that.
We all got there, we're all here's going to Toshiba, or just Xerox, or Shih Tzu.
Well, we did, we got a quote, when we just recently redid our quote, we did go back, and it was cheaper still with Toshiba. So we might, that's a good point, we probably should check for a full service agreement. I will let Joe know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What other high points here? Yeah, this budget covers all of those building maintenance projects also. Um, we've got the roof is in this year's budget. We've got the new HVAC system in the upcoming budget. Hopefully, that ten percent bump in utilities will cover. Let's see.
Maybe you may wanna opt in.
Seriously?
I don't know. It's trending, it's trending.
I can bump it as much as you want.
I don't know, it's, it is trending, it's gonna trend high. Uh, utilities, oh, yeah.
Three thousand you saved on the tables, and it's...
Yeah.
It's cold, and, yeah.
Well, I guess it won't be the...
Well, the next time we meet, I will, um, I'll put together what, uh, like a twenty percent increase would look like. How that would hit our budget.
All right.
Well, if you did twenty percent, you're gonna double what you had there in terms of the change, correct?
Yep.
Or did you... Did you already have that in there? Or you did five seventy-six over the, like, for example, with...
Right.
Water, one forty-five, that was in the difference between the twelve fifty-seven, right, and fifteen ninety-two? No, no, that's not... That's the actual today, okay, so if you're going back here to your monthly, it's on fifty-seven fifty-eight to the sixteen, or to the, excuse me, I'm sorry, fourteen forty-seven to the fifteen ninety-two, that's the one forty-five. So if you're going to twenty percent, then we just double that to two ninety and...
Right. Okay. What else? We've got the breakdown there of the vehicles for fifty-one ten two oh one. And I assumed three percent wage increases, but no, most of those numbers are for you, Jake, right? Two point four for, um, union, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we always try to figure, um, like, just figure three when we're looking at those one hundred lines, because the overtime and everything's in there, you really don't know, um, like, so this year, if we base it on the last two years.
Right.
Our line of water, they're gonna be completely different.
Jake, um, with this increase in your vehicle line, with those three vehicles, what do you anticipate the following year? As I don't?
I think that we're gonna be set for, set for a bit, because that'll be, we get one and two this year, and then, um, excuse me. Yeah, one and two this year, and then twenty and eighteen in this next budget, in W ten, and it'll be, W ten's the last one, that's the big one. That truck alone, that's the one I was saying was two hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, by itself, so, um, once that one's replaced, we should be set in just the normal rotation, uh, I think somebody asked me to finish it before, but we're looking at three years on the dump, or, excuse me, on the pickup trucks, the smaller ones, um, and then in about eight years on the, on the dump trucks, trying to get those through, and then, you know, these, I think, resell them, and they still have value, and before the maintenance starts keeping us up. And that's what, you know, we're, by now, is, you know, they work at pretty, pretty tough spots. The seven fifties that we had, those two new Ford dump trucks that we have for plowing, um, it was a good idea. Um, but they aren't as heavy, um, in the front end, the whole, you know, the plow's not heavy enough to scrape the roads real well, so we still go out with our old, the bigger truck, then when we're scraping the roads, just to be able to clean them off, because, you know, we don't salt everywhere. Um, so the seven fifties are nice, they turn around better, there's, you know, they're a little more compact than those bigger trucks, but I think there's certainly still a need for a larger truck. And one of the things we even talked about, um, and it was about two hundred and eighty grand, I think it's going with the ten wheeler. And benefit of that, whenever we're hauling something, we have half the trips, you know, we carry twice as mu- twice as much stone, twice as much asphalt, um, in the truck, you know, half the labor, because it's only, you know, either one guy, or, you know, it's half the trips, I guess, because we're hauling displaced materials, so. But that's a pretty, pretty good step up on the, uh, on the cost of the truck. Which we would have suggested, except for, we don't have a garage big enough to park it, so. We'd have to end up putting an addition on the garage, and then that gets a little crazy to build an addition on the garage just because we get a bigger truck, so. Um, it would be some, someday, if we, uh, if we ever look at, um, you know, a different location or a different DPW location or anything that, maybe, then we build a big enough for a ten wheeler. Because I certainly think that there's some benefits to that, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna try to turn off, let them on Elm Street with a ten wheeler, though.
I'm just, I'm just taking the logic from the previous two years, there was a big hit in nineteen, two years relatively down, and then this one again, so I'm just looking ahead.
Yep.
Projection for next year or two years, whatever.
Yeah, the, the trucks, the six wheelers that we have are at seventeen and then eighteen. Um, so if we look at that eight-year rotation, we'd be, you know, talking about twenty-five, um, twenty-five, twenty-six, we go to replace those two, so. We'd be down for a few, and maybe even the next couple of budgets, we might be able to, if we're gonna be down in those, and we can, maybe have, build some, like, put some budgeted in there, transfers to that equipment reserve, so then when we do go and get those two, especially two in a row like that, um, that reserve will be down.
Since Don's not here, can we, uh, hack the fourteen twenty four hundred line? Save a little there.
Oh, looks pretty good, Marshall.
Excellent.
Have to go to another meeting, excuse me?
You can't eat anymore if you leave.
Can't vote on anything.
Okay, almost all of, second page is, uh, DPW numbers. So get Jake with those questions. Anything that's got the little green box next to the yellow, that's Jake.
Very neat with the color coordination.
I like my colors.
Yeah. Makes it simple to read.
Got it, Jake. Oh, second to last row in, on the second page, the historian.
Yep.
This came up at our initial meeting, um, when we went from having Lynn payroll to paying her as, um, ten ninety-nine. Yeah, she's asking for us to make up that difference in the payroll taxes that she now has to cover.
And I said, then if we do it for her, we would, we need to do it for everybody, and this only board members just recently got an increase. And I think that position should really be reporting more to those four.
Interesting, but, um, quite a variation here from twenty. Are you looking at the seventy-five, ten, four hundred?
Yes. Oh, it, that difference is because she needed a new computer this year. And her. Yeah. So that, that bump represents our, the half of her computer that we covered.
I'm still trying to figure out. If I'm looking at nineteen, it says four ten, correct? Am I on the right line?
Yeah, that was actual.
At twenty, it's a thousand.
Yeah.
In twenty-one, it's thirty-three. Three thousand, three hundred. And then we budgeted thirty-six, but spent twenty-three so far. What's the decrease from twenty-one? The thirty-three down to the twenty-nine. And seven oh two of that is supposedly for twenty-two, the increase for seven percent. I don't understand what, how they're fluctuating, why they're fluctuating.
The thirty-six oh two includes our share of her new computer. I don't recall how much that was exactly.
Okay, so how about twenty-one?
Twenty-one, that one, I don't remember what else was in, oh, yeah, I'm not on the VPN. I don't remember what else was in there besides her pay, but I can look.
Was it the year she had to buy a bunch of archiving things, acid-free paper and folders and-
Yeah, yeah.
And it was a store something, I believe.
Yeah, that must be it.
It was recently. She had a bunch of things, supplies.
Thanks, Jake.
If she worked, I don't know how long or how often she works there, but this was a perspective, if it's six hours a week or eight hours a week, the difference is three or four hundred hours a year, and twenty-nine hundred bucks is seven dollars and something an hour. And if she works six hours a week, if it's eight hours a week, which I suspect is probably a little more than that, you're talking nine dollars an hour, um, or, excuse me, it's the other way around, seven dollars an hour, she's working eight hours a week and nine dollars an hour at six, but I suspect it's probably more than eight, so you're probably getting in the less than seven dollars an hour, which-
Well, she's paid by the town, too.
Right, yeah. Oh, that's true, yeah, so we've doubled, we've fourteen, new, might be able to invest her in some shovel and sawdust, so she can-
Well, I'll just ask for a report.
Yeah.
In the next period, short period of time, to let me get to know what was happening this past year, if you have a good idea.
Okay. Would you believe it where it is for right now?
What did we do with the zoning board? Are they in the same situation or not?
Uh, well, she's the only one who has said anything about covering that difference.
Okay.
Yeah, to have her, I think you have to be, you have to be consistent, obviously, so it's broad enough.
And I would make the point that that is not really a lot of money. For us to make that-
Right, and if we're looking at all the boards, we're already told for all the boards.
Yeah.
One board and-
One board plus the handful of other stipend people come in, you know, um, I don't agree, I think-
Would that be included, though, because they're, they're as a whole, the band, that, and that might be separate, because that's, yeah, I don't know what to say about that.
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay. Can you write that in the, you know, yes?
There aren't really a lot of surprises-
No.
Here.
Anyhow. We tried to make up a way, way more than eight thousand dollars, and most years just sitting here.
Yeah, and it's actually five thousand, if you take away my extra-
Three grand.
Needles. Yeah.
Jake, um, take me to sixty-four, ten, four thirty-two. Says parking lots, hanging baskets, et cetera, why are we going to? Well, I see that there's a decrease of point five, but, um, right now we're at twelve, we were at previously the eighty-one, eight thousand, nine thousand, suddenly we went from, to projecting eighteen and amended budget to twenty-seven. Why would we be up that much for a parking lot? And hanging baskets, et cetera?
All the, um, a few years ago, we combined a lot of the hanging baskets and ground plantings and things, and then the sign that also was a mulch. Um, keep in mind, the twelve, we only spent twelve so far this year, but we slipped through all the spring plantings and things for redoing, a lot of these things cross the budget year, because we try to have all the baskets and planters and stuff out around the end of May, which was right at the end of the budget year, too, so.
Right.
Um, just, some of them will be on one side of it, and some of the things I think we pick up are on one side, and the baskets and things that are built end up, they come out, the first things come out of the next years.
Right, and this past year is a good, uh, example, the original budget on that line was eighteen thousand, the amended budget twenty-seven four. Because, and that difference is what we rolled over from one fiscal year to the next.
And this also, I believe it includes the bake pods, I think the bid covers all the plantings and the bake planters that we put out on the street.
Okay.
I believe, so that's, you know, kind of orders comes up and plants are listed on that a Saturday or Sunday morning, and, um, that's, yeah, it's, um, all covered by the bids, so.
Okay.
Good shape for, um, excellent. Just chop, chop that five thousand and hope I can use.
What was that other adjective? Sparkly here or something?
Snow removal equipment, Jake. Seventy-five, one percent lower lease. And the whacker, fifty K after trading. But we are going up to eighty-two thousand from sixty, basically.
We are, so fifty-one, forty-two, two hundred, so we're, yes. Yeah, that's the, the, um, yeah, so lower lease is in there, that's the, like, she's got thirty-two thousand, and the whacker is, I believe, about seventy-one, I think it said, and we could get a trade-in for our dark whackers, a twenty... Making a note to get a, I think it's a twenty-nineteen or twenty-eighteen. But we could trade that in and get an updated one, um, or they don't make the WL thirty-two, it's a WL thirty-four now, I believe it has a little bit more power to it. Um, and it's about fifty thousand and that, on the trade-on for that. So, um, glad to get more information on that, you can see in the picture, they probably have it in here.
This one are in line. Don't consider that a vehicle. And like the trucks.
I'm sorry.
Don't consider that like a vehicle, like the trucks.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's, I don't know if we have another line for, because the vehicles, I think, one of them's in, um, a two oh one line, for the fifty-one, ten, it's in a two oh one line, and the fifty-one, forty-two, which is a snow line, I think it just has a two hundred only.
Yeah, we don't have a separate line for snow removal vehicles.
This is the only way to, not have the four two, goofy.
I had one of my notes, my hand notes on it, but I can get a hand note to get to the NY, I want. I have a question on the storm sewer equipment gutters. From what it's been in the past, at seven thousand and then forty-one dollars in twenty, nothing in twenty-one, nothing yet spent on fifteen grand here in twenty-two, and looking at fifteen and twenty-three, what are we spending it on this year? And looking further ahead, that would be, the, um, storm sewer equipment gutters, eighty-one, forty, two hundred.
In the gutters, there's, you were, it includes the DI's, I believe, no, DI repairs is on the road. So the gutters, I for some reason do not have the one with my notes on it, but I do believe that that is part of Wood Street, is, is, we're doing the gutters, and the circle there on Wood Street always gets, it's just out of whack, so we're looking at taking the gutters and expanding it just about three feet back, still within the right-of-way, so that buses and garbage trucks can turn around down there. And I think that's what the gutter is for that, is Wood Street. And I apologize, please, I thought I had my one with the notes on it in there.
That would be this year, right? Because we haven't spent anything yet, so you had fifteen thousand for this year, so that's what that would be going towards this year?
No, there's a fifteen for this year is Wood Street, so fifteen for next year is gonna be, I'll have to find my notes, I think it's just regular gutter replacements, because we're not doing a, a single street this year with the whole street of gutters. I will get back to you on that one.
Refuge collection personnel. What does that include, what do they do? Those are the trash bins that are on Main Street?
Yes, trash bins on Main Street, and it's also, um, zip, brush as well, where should I?
Which one?
Refuge personnel, the one hundred line.
Eighty-one, sixty, one hundred.
I believe the brush comes out of that one, and leaves are street cleaning?
Yes, leaves are street cleaning, I don't know what goes in the trash.
There's a few brush pickup as well, I don't know.
Okay.
Just trying to think, refuse, would generally be like a garbage collection, this would be those Main Street waste bins, you know?
Yeah, yeah, they, that's one that they quoted, that there's, some of those and the mowing ones are really goofy, because, you know, if you're mowing a park, does it go to landscape maintenance, or does it go to parks?
Yeah.
Or does it go, if we're mowing in front of the Villatoll, I think Villatoll is landscape maintenance, parks goes to parks, personnel, um, depends on what you're mowing or where, so, guys, well, the time is kinda split up sometimes, so. Um, ultimately, the one hundred lines are just, you know, the same pie, it just depends on what slice it is, you know, all the one hundreds go together.
Same thing you have to do with the shade trees.
Is it the shade trees personnel?
Oh, you have shade tree equipment, and you have nothing since twenty. And then, um,
Trash one.
We go down to plants, baskets and trees, and we're at ten thousand dollars, which is a doubling of what you were looking at this year, which is pretty large, and it says street trees, so I'm not sure.
If you notice the two lines down there, the removals have gone up quite a bit, too. Um, so we're looking at replacing, replacing, you know, those that we were removing, so, um, you know, and that's, um, we're, you know, we, we have quite a few, um, planting sites that we can do, we haven't got them yet, you know, out of this budget, um, which we plan on doing that in the spring. Um, and then, um, but that, you know, when you're four or five hundred dollars apiece, the five thousands, I think it's a lot, but there's not that many trees at the end of the day. Um, so we're looking at, you know, ten thousand and replace even more, because we're cutting down even more, there's some ash. We've treated, all our ash that we treated, the street tree ones, are right, um, some of them in Case Park, we've had to take down. Case Park, we've had to take down that, some of the removals, um, some of those ash trees there, um, and then other, other trees, you know, when they get, they're fifty, sixty years old, and then they're, we, and some of them are pretty big, uh, trees that have to come down as well, so, um, we try to limit and save the trees as much as we possibly can, and if we do, unfortunately, have to cut some down, then we want to get in there, we don't replace them in the same location, um, depending on why we had to take it down, but, um, certainly not right away, so we're looking at some of their other planting sites that we have available to us, we'd like to start, you know, putting more and more in.
Have anything?
No.
Is everybody tired?
No.
Tired of looking at...
Always colors.
I like the color code, man.
No, no, it really makes it easy to read, so.
Good.
You really can't pass this stuff.
Okay, well, if you guys have nothing else, then I think we have to start, we'll have to pass the information on to the other two board members that were not here this evening, we'll do that, and hopefully we will see them later.
Good thing we wanted to go to the workshop, because we wouldn't even be able to do that.
Why do we go, why do we meet, next Tuesday?
Call for takeout.
No, we meet this Thursday.
Just go this Thursday, but the boards workshop will continue until next, we'll have to convene it, we'll just have to end it next Tuesday.
Yes.
So are we, are we gonna, we have a tentative meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, do you want to stick with that?
Unless you want to move it further, do you want more time? I think I would like to have one again, because I'd like to have two other people that are here to get a little budget here.
Yeah. Yeah.
They probably shouldn't head at the same length of time, unless they might talk about things specifically.
Sure.
They should, they should do it.
Okay.
Good, unless you guys can fill in some of the question marks that were here tonight.
Okay, and if you come up with any questions or anything else you'd like me to analyze or try and predict, or, you know?
Perfect, you will reach out to me.
Okay, very good, well then, at this time.
I want to know what this Marshall was mine there.
Duly noted. It is seven eighteen, and in commotion.
Oh, we didn't really have to...
I don't know, I'm working anyway.
We can't.
You can, you're gonna have forum.
Oh, well, okay, so we are suspended until...
We're supposed to have this meeting, we have a lot.
We're suspended until...
You have to sit there until next Tuesday, or Thursday, when you can have a...
We're taking a journey.
Yes.
That's a good way to...
We're just adjourning right now.
We're just adjourning right now.
Her food and butter.
A recess, yeah, I like it. Very good, good work by team.
She did an excellent job.
Wow, I'm sure she got some help from the department heads.
Yes, I did. Outstanding.
I just got, I just got dizzy a little bit there.